I would like to call to order the August 19th regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. The first business item is 1.2, adaption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item 2.1, gifts and announcements. Shauna, would you read the gifts?
Absolutely. So there were 31 gifts received for schools and programs this period for a total of $4,052.25. And there were 15 gifts received for the Ralph Reader food shelf this period for a total of $25,772.76. It's recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, thanks Shauna. Upcoming meetings. Our next work session will be on Thursday, September 11th at 5:00 PM. And our next regular meeting of the school board will be on Tuesday, September 16th, both at 7:00 PM, both here at the district center. At this time, we will move on to agenda item 2.2, superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Yeah, just a couple of updates tonight. First, I want to mention that while we have not officially started classes yet, fall activities at our schools are well underway. August 11th was the first day for our Minnesota State High School League activities. We've been in and out of our schools here over the summer. It's great to see so many of our students back in and around our schools. We want to wish all of them great success as they enjoy their activities this fall. And second, registration for our fall community education activities will open on August 26th, 9:00 AM. So be sure to mark your calendars to register if you think you or your child might be interested in participating in those activities this fall. I always encourage everyone to take a look at the variety of offerings. I'm always impressed with how many different offerings there are available through our community education program. There are activities for all ages, so please take a look and choose some wonderful opportunities yet this fall. And that's all I have this evening.
Great, thanks Superintendent Lennox. At this time, we'll move on to item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have item 4.1, 2025-26, district operational plan. And I will turn this over to Superintendent Lennox.
Wonderful. Well, tonight, we're bringing forward the district operational plan for the 2025-2026 school year. For the public, administration and board members have really had multiple opportunities now to review and discuss these goals. This year, we're focused on eight total goals, three of them that have a priority status for us. Those goals are, number one, expanding our career pathway opportunities for our high school students. The second goal is developing a comprehensive district plan for our outdoor learning classrooms and activities. That is a priority goal for the district this year. Goal three, the expansion of our student information system in the areas of assessment and analysis. Our fourth goal, strengthening our onboarding process for all of our employee groups. Goal five, to support the District Capital Projects Technology Levy Campaign. That is a priority goal for us this year. Goal six, complete contract negotiations with all of our employee groups. Goal seven, to complete an updated enrollment and facility study. That is our third priority goal this year. And number eight is to complete a district-wide energy audit. So board members, the final draft of these goals is included in your materials and your packet this evening. And administration is recommending approval of these as our 2025-2026 top goals.
Great. Any questions for Superintendent Lennox? We have discussed these district operational goals in great detail at our retreat that we recently had as a school board. So we have been talking about this for months and have come to the agreement that these are the right goals to be focused on for the year. So, as Superintendent Lennox said, I'd entertain a motion for the approval of the 2025-26 district operational plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have item 5.1. We are going to get a 2025-26 enrollment update. And I'd like to welcome up Darren Johnson, Executive Director of School Management. Welcome Darren.
Thanks. All right. Good evening, members of the school board. I'm here tonight to provide an update on enrollment and projections for the 25-26 school year. Numbers in this report are based on August 14th, 2025 data, so you have a sense of what we're looking at. In our second year of providing a non-district enrollment option to surrounding community members, our numbers are up from January projections. Of particular note was an increase of students from the east side of the school district. Snail Lake Education Center is approximately 80 students past projection. In combination, Turtle Lake and Island Lake are 55 students over projection. Chippewa Middle School is approximately 30 students over initial projection, while Moundsview High School is approximately 50 students over projection. For the 25-26 school year, we accepted over 155 applications for open enrollment. Over half of these students will be in kindergarten for the 25-26 school year. Also, as is typical, we saw a spike in enrollment of sixth grade students in our district when comparison is made from last year to this year. Across our chart, highlighting numbers from all individual schools, all of our schools but one is over projections. The one school that is under projection is Valentine Hills. They are currently slated to begin the school year with fewer students than projected. Combined, senior classes for Moundsview and Irondale High School exist at 900-plus students for current grades nine through 12. So that means as we take a look at those graduating classes for the next four years, all of those high school classes, when you add Moundsview and Irondale together, they are going to be above 900 students. As we look at our total district January projection of 11,128 students, our current headcount is 11,445, which means we are 317 students over January projection. And finally, at this time of year, we are confident on October 1st, 2025, our enrollment will indeed be over projection, but it is of course likely that our number will not be 317 students. And finally, we will continue to watch our enrollment numbers for the final weeks of the summer, and we'll be supporting section sizes by frequently communicating with site administration. So those are the numbers. I believe that there was a copy of the data for you to take a look at as well. If you have any questions, certainly feel free to ask me. And I think we have, I'm staying here, I think, for the next topic.
You are going to stay here with us.
Can I ask just one clarifying question?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to clarify, some people might hear "over-projection" and take that to mean overcrowded or too many students. Can you clarify that that is not the case?
Correct, yep. So initially, in January, we make projections so that we can begin the part of, you know, the finance and taking a look at how many sections or grade level classroom, homeroom sizes that we will have. And that begins the process of us, you know, assigning staff and beginning that process of taking a look and figuring out finance-wise what we're going to need to take care of our students for the upcoming school year. So it is only projection, and then it does not mean, for example, that we are going to be overcrowded. This is just the beginning of the finance process. So that's the difference between projection and making sure that we have enough room.
So we have enough space and enough teachers for all the children that are coming?
We are good.
Perfect.
We're good.
Thank you.
Darren is going to stay up here, and he's going to cover item 5.2, readiness for school opening update.
Sure, yep. So also here to provide that update for readiness. And a couple of different things. I definitely want to talk about the different summer projects that are being taken care of over the last couple of weeks. But I also want to talk about some additional topics. For example, in the area of staffing throughout the final weeks of the summer, members of our talented district HR team, as well as building principals and school office staff, continue to work to fill those final licensed and unlicensed positions in our schools and programs. Community members, we always remind community members who are interested in employment with Moundsview Public Schools are encouraged to review the current job postings on the district's website. In particular, we're always looking for interested nutrition services staff and paraeducators who either want to serve in a substitute or permanent capacity. This is the part that I think everyone looks forward to hearing the most, but we do have some summer remodeling and maintenance projects that have been completed during these summer months. So we'll start first with our K centers. You will notice if you drive by Pike Lake, they have a new overlay of that entire parking lot. So you'll see that it's all black, it's all seal-coated, and the playground, I should say, has been restripped. At Snail Lake, if you are inside, you will notice a new cafeteria floor, and that space has been painted as well. As we move into the elementary schools and walking into Bel Air, you'll notice that some walls have been removed in some spaces, but in some other spaces like the main office, permanent walls have been added. You would also notice new carpet, paint, and some of those classrooms additionally have been carpeted as well. Sunnyside, there also have been spaces that have been painted and carpeted. Pine Wood, once again, carpeted, painted walls, new flooring in the cafeteria. Elementary School, Turtle Lake, you would notice a real big project of the remodeling of the library, new bookcases, painting carpet as well. Island Lake, again, carpet, that's a similar theme this year, a lot of carpet. Island Lake, new cafe floor, cafeteria floor. Their staff lounge has been updated also at Island Lake, and their special education space has been facelifted as well. Valentine Hills, once again, classrooms have been painted and their parking lot has been touched up with new seal coating as well. When we take a look at middle schools, the biggest project, Highview with their, beginning of their geothermal project, which we've given a lot of updates prior to tonight. New water distribution lines. The big thing I think people will notice when they come in is the LED lighting in the hallways, so it's much brighter. One of the projects at Highview, classrooms again, carpeted, remodeled with new tile, new lighting, new paint at Highview. Edgewood, the big notice that you will see at Edgewood is all the lockers have been painted. So for people that are coming in for back-to-school night, that'll be something that people will notice right away. Chippewa, painting throughout the building. Our two high schools, the projects would include Irondale doing Phase 1 of their geothermal installation. So some of those things, people will notice, and then some of those things are also kind of behind the walls, so you might not notice as much of that at Irondale. The things that you will notice at Irondale, remodeled art rooms, remodeled science rooms. So those are really big places, especially if you're taking a science or an art course, especially this fall. You'll notice new casework or bookshelves. Again, a lot of paint, a lot of flooring work being done, and two of their restrooms have been remodeled as well. Finally, at Moundsview High School, you will notice that they've moved the coffee shop, and that will be closer in the LMC, I should say, the IMC Commons area, moving from the IMC to the Commons area up front. Classrooms have been painted, floors have been re-tiled. Concession stand, ticket booth, that has all been updated, as well as new seal coating in the parking lot as well. So I like the combination of these projects. Some things will be, people will walk in and they will notice right away. Other things, you would probably have to be a custodian maybe, or someone that's been working on the project in a different way to understand what those improvements have been, right? So I do think there's a lot of things. I think Chris Paquette had mentioned, every school has been touched in some way, which I think is great, right? There's that piece that's very exciting for everyone that will be coming in, staff and parents and students alike. Want to give our appreciation to Chris Paquette, who is the Director of School Operations, and also want to note, site-level custodians, district maintenance crew, they've all been working hard this summer, and we appreciate the work that they do. Transportation work, transportation department team members have been in communication with families, making sure that the correct forms have been turned in. Of course, our vendor, American Student Transportation, has been working hard to make sure that we have the right amount of bus drivers, right? So we have kids who are going to be able to get to school on time and safe and smooth. Certainly, if parents have any questions related to that bus route, they can visit our district website. But we are always grateful for the bus drivers who proudly serve our community, and for those parents who are, you know, wanting that first day to go well, it's always nice to see that bus driver who's been there for a couple of years too. So that's something that we appreciate. And finally, just want to show my appreciation for all the staff members who've been working hard this summer preparing for the school year. So whether that's a paraeducator, for example, that's been doing some professional development, or an administrator, or a teacher, everyone works hard in the summer to get ready for the upcoming school year. So we are thankful. But overall, I am pleased to announce that we will be ready to go when students return on Tuesday, September 2nd. Any questions that I can answer for the group?
I could tell you that the Edgewood lockers were a topic of conversation at the Bach household. Met with mixed reviews.
As with every project, some people like the project and some people don't.
I would just offer a comment. Darren already mentioned Chris Paquette and our custodial crew. We can't thank them enough. There are those, well, that's their job, yep. And they take great pride in the work they do, and we should be ever so grateful for the team we have and the work they put in, often unseen, unappreciated. So I want to say that publicly, and we're going to make sure we get them some pizza or something, just to make sure that they understand just how much we appreciate them. But I also just want to thank all the staff who have been working this summer. I can't tell you the number of things that come up. You may recall the storms that blew through Minnesota. We had Xcel Energy scheduled to do work at Irondale, that all of a sudden, they were out in the community trying to get power back on for thousands of people, then trying to reschedule that. And things we thought were going to be one day couldn't be, and they got bounced and moved, and we had to move things around. And our staff and our community have really been understanding about some of those things that are just out of our control. And I just really want to say thank you to them, because that can really, you know, kind of rub you the wrong way sometimes, like, why is it my program, or why do I have to move, or how is this happening to us right now? Really, their understanding, their patience, their grace as we've gone through this summer and some of those unforeseen needs to change venues or change programming, they've been absolutely fantastic. So thank you to all of them who are part of our system and worked, you just don't see it in the summer, right? But those of us that are here, working with them in all the summer programming, which we'll hear some about next, just really, really appreciate all of them that have been part of that work, getting ready for the start of the school year.
Absolutely.
Thanks Darren.
Darren, thanks for the updates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 6.1, summer school and summer work by teachers. So we're going to welcome Angie Peschall, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Carl Brown, Community Education Director, Ryan Lang, Principal of Snail Lake, and Bobby Olson, Principal of the Area Learning Center. Welcome.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Well, it's August, so that means we're here to share with you all of the wonderful things that have happened and continue to happen in the summer. I have a team with me tonight, and Chair Gashin just mentioned who they all are. I'll have them introduce themselves, so you can put a name to a face.
My name is Ryan Lang. I'm the Principal of the Snail Lake Kindergarten Center. Hello. So a couple of things that we want to just kick off about elementary is just grounding you in what that experience was for our students. Let's do this. So again, it was four days a week, across four weeks, from July 7th to the 31st. It was mornings only. We were located in six different elementary schools and one of our kindergarten centers to receive all of our incoming students for the fall. Small class sizes, about 6 to 12, depending on the grade level and the buildings. The focus is on literacy, math, and social-emotional learning. Some highlights for this year, we taught over 550 elementary students in our summer programming for summer school, and over 85% of those staff were Moundsview employees currently, which is a really great increase and something we're very proud of. Couple photos, in addition to academics of literacy and math, we got to celebrate, do fun things outside. Students got to be with friends and just enjoy that Minnesota weather. At the end, we did a staff survey of our elementary staff, asking, what did you like most? Again, just some of the highlights of our staff that are committing their time in the summer, looking at building relationships. They love the flexibility of the summer programming and getting to know those incoming students. Again, we have Moundsview employees who are getting to know those students that they're going to be spending this next school year with, and just the joy of being around kids in the summer. Some more pictures of non-academic things that students are really engaged with, they love, have a lot of fun with their friends and peers, doing things that maybe you have a little bit more time to do than the regular school year. Then, ending a little bit more with some of those staff survey questions, what were the challenges? 42% of our respondents said there weren't any, which is a huge highlight. We know that five, six years ago, there was a lot of challenges, which is a lot of things. So we're taking all the wins. Some of the things that could have helped our staff be a little bit more effective was just time. So we're looking at ways that we can get them time to really be creative about setting things up, taking them down, as well as how can we partner with families about getting consistent student attendance to be there for those experiences that are exciting, fun, and great for our kiddos.
My gosh, thanks, Ryan. Ooh, thank you. I get excited about little things. I'm Bobby Olson. I am the Principal at the Area Learning Center, and I help work with our secondary summer school, which is middle level and high school level. So again, a lot of the same highlights that we have, I always like to give you guys a little bit, I should put it in a graph, because it's kind of nice that way, but we had an increase again this year for our middle school participants. It's not a huge number. Mary Stab has taught me to keep that in mind, right? Like, an extra four students is not a huge increase, but we still see that increase over time. Most of the teachers are from our district. We had a couple of subs that have been in our buildings before that came and taught for us at the middle level, which was great. Highview and Edgewood were combined because of that work happening at Highview this summer, which went really well. And it was nice to see the collaboration between the two middle levels. Students seemed to really enjoy it. It was very STEAM-based, so we're looking at really increasing their skills with literacy, math, social-emotional development of our scholars. Again, looking at having our sixth graders especially that are transitioning in, coming and getting an experience in their middle level, and enhancing their relationships with their peers, staff, and building that school community. Success stories, always its relationships. Staff and students, parents alike, always report that they really appreciate that relationship-building time. There's lots of hands-on learning experiences for our middle level learners. We also have a safe and supportive transition from that elementary to that middle level, which is really fantastic for those students coming in. As always, we want to continue to build those field trip experiences, some of those hands-on experiences for our students, and we really want to continue that partnership to get our sixth graders in. And I did notice, in looking at our enrollment, we had far more sixth graders coming into our summer programming than we did last year. So that's a success as well. High school, we had a little bit more students participating again. As Ryan has alluded to, I don't know this thing like four or five years ago, it was a big deal, and we still experience a lot of repercussions for our students, and we want to make sure that we're really supporting them in that credit earning. We did earn pretty similar, about 10 credits less, but still a significant amount. When we're talking about 202 credits, each semester is .5, that's a significant amount of credits for students to be earning. We had five students graduate this year. I'm super proud because the majority of them were ALC students. So that was really fun to be a part of, meeting the students and families where they're at, to help those students make progress towards their goals. Always, we want to do that early identification of students. We want to be able to target you early on. Ideally, we're going to help you out in the moment, but if we know you need summer school, we want to know right away, so we can build the plan for you as a student. And then retaining teachers from our high schools to teach during summer is always a big push for us. This year, we did have the majority of our high school teachers come back from our previous summer programs. So that includes Moundsview teachers, but also teachers that work outside of the district who come back to us each summer to help with our programming.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carl Brown, the Director of Community Education for the district. Tonight, I'm going to share summer updates from a variety of programs that we hold across the district, from ages of early childhood all the way through adult education and adult enrichment. Before I start, though, I'd like to just share my thanks and appreciation for the opportunity to work with all of our principals and custodial staff and office staff to really share their buildings and district facilities across the summer, because there, as you've heard earlier, there's a lot going on. And so to add in programs and make sure that we have things open and available when we need, it takes a team effort. So we have a great team, and it's really fun to look back on the summer of all the things that were happening. I'm just going to burn these out so I can show what we have on here. So tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about elementary and middle school day camps, summer music, our abandoned orchestra programs, sports camps and clinics, early childhood family education, adult education, and then some adult and family enrichment programs. So talking about the summer enrichment, so primarily extra activities, fun things, they're building on sports, STEM programs, art, theater, lots of different opportunities. We had 4,636 total enrollments. The vast majority are district families who are participating in this, but as a community ed program, we also will happily have students from neighboring districts. So we do have, sometimes people come and they stay with a family member, or they're just in neighboring areas and they find our catalog and want to participate. So it's great to have those numbers. Elementary day camps, those are the programs I've been here before talking about. We run those at Turtle Lake. They're AM and PM classes, they're four-day programs. Parents can choose whether they want a half-day, morning, half-day, afternoon, really, and they can pick and choose for that. It's been a number of years since we've offered that and found that it's a model that fits well within our community, knowing that we have a variety of other camps that Shoreview Community Center, New Brighton Community Center, as well as a lot of other providers offer. This has been a great opportunity to give people more variety and choice as well. So with the STEAM camps and other pieces, Summer Explorer is one of our camps that is kind of a traditional day camp. It's something where we're finding it's a great opportunity to have this variety of things without a direct focus on robotics or STEAM or something. But oftentimes, families will fill in a morning class of Summer Explorer and add in a specific class. Or sometimes it's a class where they would like to participate, but the class they want is full, and we'll offer it later in the season. So that one's a big one. 435 students were in there. Lunch Bunch is a program we just add. It's an ability of supervised lunch, so that if families want to participate- add. It's an ability of a supervised lunch, so that if families want to participate all day, they can drop their students off at eight in the morning and pick them up as late as five o'clock and have a full day of programming. Fun Friday field trips, part of our model being four days, is we don't require a Friday piece, but we offer field trips. As you can see from the numbers, 168 students, which is, I think, a great number. It really, to me, it represents the parents that want that or need that and and have chosen that, but it also shows that there's a lot of flexibility, knowing that if people want to do something different or take Friday off, they're not bound to pay for or show up for a day that they're not going to attend. Middle school camps. This is the second year that we ran middle school camps in kind of a remat model, and we had 672 students. We're really happy to see that the interest is there, and we've kind of tweaked that. In a lot of ways, it has an enrichment focus on it, but it gives students at the middle school age a little bit more freedom and flexibility, and had really good feedback from students and family on the camps. So we anticipate offering those again next summer. Same thing with those, STEAM, language arts, sports, a lot of different things. We held that at Chippewa this year. Hy-Vee was closed, so we try to offer a variety of things across the district. Lunch group, we had 121 students. For some middle school students, it wasn't as popular. High school and middle school sports camps. Every year, we work with a lot of our coaches and different things to offer. Summer training and conditioning, we had 801 students. I would say it's pretty consistent with that. And as was mentioned before, fall activities started up on the 11th, so a lot of that was that pre-work that students were doing. And if they're in a fall sport, they're in season now doing practices or two-a-days or depending on what it is. So they're busy in preparation, and I think this week, we even have games starting. Other one was Wolf Ridge Overnight Camp. I'll talk about shortly. And then we had other youth enrichment, just a number of different programs that were variety that we had that ran off-site or through partner programs. All right, Wolf Ridge, just highlighting this one. This has been a fun one. This is our second year of offering a community education overnight experience. We just got back a couple of weeks ago, August 4th through 8th. We were up there for five days, left bright and early on a Monday morning from Irondale High School and came back a little bit later than we planned due to some bus issues, but the trip overall was a great success. We had students entering fourth grade through seventh grade. So this year, we had 43 students. We had a lot of fun with canoeing, hiking, environmental ed, outdoor education, lots of different programs. As you can see from the pictures, we were in bogs. We were learning how to make fires and do different things, and that is an indoor climbing wall. There's a couple of those that we were able to participate in. And I didn't have a picture, but we also had a high-rise course that we were able to use a couple of times, and students absolutely loved it. So we're looking forward to continuing those opportunities as well. All right, moving on to summer band and our summer music programs. Every summer, we have some great opportunities for music in our students in elementary and middle school. Band programs as well as orchestra programs entering for elementary students, we had 503 enrollments. We have a beginning band, which is entering fifth grade, 263 students, and really roughly the other half of the students were at the middle school level for that, entering sixth through ninth grade for a variety of programs. Runs the four weeks of summer school, and then the band program does an optional Valley Fair performance field trip, where students can go down there and have a concert, have some fun, but then get the rest of the day just having a blast at Valley Fair. The weather was great. We had plenty of buses showed up on time and everything, so it was a really good trip for everyone. Almost 300 students plus 25 staff members. Moving on to summer orchestra, 662 total enrollments. This is something where orchestras for students entering entering grade four and grade five, so close to 400 students at the elementary level. And then we move on to a little over 200, 226 students in the military, or excuse me, the middle school level entering sixth through ninth. For their fun piece, they are gearing up for a September 16th National Anthem performance at the Twins game that they've done for many years. Schedule-wise changed a little bit. It's a game with the Yankees, so I think some people are excited about that. Even though the Twins may not be having their best season, it's always fun to see good baseball. And when we were finalizing this presentation, it's we're up to about 650 people. So every year, it's between 650 and 800 people that attend that event. Early childhood, primarily this summer, we had just some opportunities. We had a number of TIC sports classes, a lot of fun. We probably had about 75 people attend those programs and just having some of those opportunities. As I had mentioned before, we've been preparing for the start of the school year, so we're gearing up for a lot of preschool and pre-K classes coming up. So should be a great year for early childhood. All right, adult education. By that, I'm talking about Silverview Education Center, so our Adult Basic Ed program. We have a variety of different summer programs that are offered. We had ESL classes that were, the students were taking CompTIA, security, different technology career pathways classes. We always run GED and diploma prep for people who either need support in those areas or plan on taking the GED through the Pearson Testing. Also, some Microsoft bootcamps and different computer essential programs, and Pearson Testing that is open to anyone. So it's not only adult education. Students will see people come to us for professional certifications or recertifications throughout the summer, so it's a great opportunity for them. Summer school alone, we had 333 students participate in the month of July, and we are gearing up for a full house on September 2nd, which is great to see as well.
Carl, can I just add, one of the things that we talked about last summer as well is that our childcare at Silverview, because Adult Basic Education is with the Area Learning Center at Silverview, our childcare director, Jeanette Wolf, opened up the childcare. So anybody who was looking to do that adult education programming this summer, a lot of them were able to bring in their under-kindergarten students to have some very high-quality daycare with Jeanette while their parents were getting the education and the training that they desired over the summer. So I just want to do a huge shout-out to her and her team for making that possible. It's not something that they have to do, yet they really believe in our students and their children, and I'm just super proud of that.
Thank you for adding that. Yeah, that is a really nice addition to our program. And we've heard from a number of families and students that that would be much more difficult for them to attend adult education classes if they didn't have some childcare. All right, and the last area tonight I'm going to talk about is just some adult and family enrichment that we kept going through the summer. 166 enrollments. We've talked a little bit about this. We've been doing summer community lunches with the city of New Brighton for over a year and a half now. Those of it continued, we slowed down a little bit and really only offer one lunch over the summer, but we've done breakfast and bingo programs. So it's just as simple as, you know, coffee and a donut or pastry if they want, and bingo is a hit, and people just enjoy playing it. But I don't really think it's about necessarily the activity. It's really about giving people an opportunity to connect with others. And with the adult programs, we've heard so much that that was an area, you know, over the last few years, especially during COVID, that adults were looking for those opportunities. We anticipate those will, you know, continue to grow as as spaces available. Some of the community luncheons, we actually are at capacity at the community center, and even when we've been able to offer a couple at the Mounts, or excuse me, the Irondale Multipurpose Room, but we're almost at capacity there. So if you know anyone who's interested, sign up early. Other pieces we have, we do have some enrichment classes. We've got adult language classes, and we have a walking club that is just trying to find those areas where we can provide services and opportunities for people that aren't already out there. And we also partner with a lot of other groups. So if we know there's a need out there, but we don't need to be the ones to offer it, we make sure we can refer people and connect them with the groups that are offering it.
So while summer offers, also offers us a time for our teachers to do some reflective work and some growth in who they are as professionals and in the craft of teaching. So I wanted to highlight some of the work that our teachers have engaged in also over the summer. So the first thing is we have a new teacher orientation. So two weeks ago, we welcomed 57 teachers, and we were all scug in this room right here. It was great fun. Got to know each other really well. But 57 new teachers across the system, and they represented early childhood, special education, classroom teachers. So they're with us for one and a half days of district overview and kind of how things work in Mounds View. They then go to their buildings for some building level orientation about what it looks like in their individual buildings and get in their classrooms. And then their, the Mounds View Education Association sponsors them also for some time around the union. So Stacy Vanderport supports them on that third day. Also, over the summer, every summer, our teachers are provided with two professional learning days to work with their professional learning communities. And so teams across the system, they meet for two days of their choosing, and they talk about how the year went. They do some reflection on the previous year and make plans as they move forward. So discuss goals, make curricular adjustments for the upcoming school year. So that happens every summer as well. And then we have courses that are offered. And as I've mentioned in the past, these are all optional courses for our teachers. So if they want to develop themselves, they're basically free courses that we offer, and most of them are instructed by other teachers. So teachers teaching teachers around that. And so just highlighting some of those courses that were offered. So the first one was Clegial Coaching, and that is about peer review and how we're looking at each other as teachers and supporting each other and how to get better at our craft by looking at the lessons that they're providing. So we had 11 participants in that. And then we've got two foundations courses. So one of them is Foundations of Effective Teaching, and we had 18 participants in that. And then we also offer a specialized foundations course that's specific to our special education teachers. So we offer that, and we had 16 participants in that this summer. Another course that is optional that we offer is Instructional Strategies That Work, and we had eight participants in that course. And then a capstone orientation, which is the third course in our Mounds View Certification Module, and it's an action research project. So we've got eight teachers who next year will be engaging in some action research to better themselves and collecting data throughout the year, supported by the instructional support team with that. So excited about that. Again, want to highlight, all of these are optional, that teachers are choosing to do because they want to continue some improvement is important to them. And then finally, we have a math class that we started offering two years ago, super popular. And as as we know, whenever teachers are talking about, hey, this class is really good, we got a lot of interest in it. So Techniques to Increase Student Mathematical Thinking. This is based on a book by Peter Lilidahl, and Building Thinking Classrooms is the name of the course. And so it's a different way of thinking about math, and students are up around the room and doing math visibly with partners, and so teachers can give some immediate feedback to teams. So very interesting, interested topic for many of our teachers. We had 15 participants take part in that this summer. Also, our teachers engage in some curriculum writing. Again, this is optional, and what they do is they submit proposals to be compensated for some work that they want to do over the summer around their curriculum. So the first proposal that I want to share with you is around the middle school design team. You may recall, last year, one of our DOP goals was around the middle school redesign. And so we had teams of teachers across the three middle schools come together, and what they did is they worked on what lessons might look like around those essential skills that we identify. Just want to remind you of those essential skills, because you'll be hearing a lot about them at the middle level. Curious thinkers, resilient learners, solution seekers, and empathetic leaders. So we created lessons, or teachers created lessons around what that means, and how students can practice those and then use those in their, in their day-to-day and in their academics. Intermediate algebra did some work also. We reviewed and updated some curriculum around a data analysis standard. So you may recall, we've got some new standards from MDE and mathematics, and the data analysis strand is a new one, and so we needed to add that. High school accelerated earth science. So you know that our students have a choice. They can take regular earth science, or they can take accelerated at the ninth grade level. And as they, as teachers were looking at that, as they implemented that last year, they wanted to add some additional information and framework around how to distinguish it from earth science. So did some work around that. United States History, redesign, again, new state standards from Minnesota Department of Education, so added an ethnic studies strand to that. So did some work to make sure that was included. And then we've got some new courses this year that we're going to be running. One of them is High School Forensics. So as you can imagine, super popular, like, a lot of kids are interested in that as an elective. So did some writing around that. Introduction to Business is another course. We had an advanced business class, but not an intro to business class, so that seemed like a missing piece. So we added that. It seems to make sense, right? United Sound is one of a music course that we added, and that is bringing together general education students and special education students together in the same classroom, as they work together to understand and learn music and create music together, and are excited about that as well. So just wanted to provide a shout-out to, to express our thanks to everybody who played a crucial role in providing meaningful experiences for our students, and then also took the opportunity to better themselves as educators. We get better as a system when everybody wants to improve. And so just every year, when I'm here giving this report and we're gathering these numbers, I'm just super, super proud of that work, and know that it doesn't, there's a lot of work that goes behind that. So appreciate the board and the support that you give us in order to do that, and supporting all of these activities. That's what we have for you tonight.
Absolutely. Well, great update.
Wow.
A lot of work and a lot of success over the summer. So thank you all for being here tonight and sharing those updates.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Incredible. I would like to point out that that's not the norm. I've worked in many school districts, and that's not normal. This is incredible.
Well, I'm glad we're normal here.
Yes. No, it's great. I mean, this, we don't, mo-most school districts don't offer this amount of programming during the summer or time for teachers.
Yeah.
So this is really great that we offer that.
And I always love, I always love to see the number of credits that the, you know, students earn, and then, you know, having the graduates too. Yeah, Jim.
I'm just curious. Do we still go, do we go and take the bus and we pick up the kids for summer school?
Yeah. Do you want to talk about transportation, Darren, a little bit?
We still provide the transportation. That's excellent. That's so important to get the kids there. I mean, that's excellent. Good to hear.
Awesome. All right. Well, next up is item seven dot one, updates. So Association of Metropolitan School District. Jim, any updates?
Oh, yes. We mostly have spent the last month working on our legislative agenda, and they tend to be the issues that we all hear about, school formula, curriculum, a whole lot of different things. And so we we continue to work on that. It's always a work in progress. We just finished up our survey to our members on priorities for this next legislative session. We always have a student presentation. We had a student activist group called Good Trouble Attend, and they were really impressive and really, really excellent, fine young people that are really involved in their communities. I certainly learned a lot from them. And, you know, next month, it's more legislative agenda and, you know, sitting down with the department, I think Department of Ed's coming next month to give us a presentation on some of these new standards that we've talked about. So that's what we're doing at AMSD. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Shawna, any updates for Northeast Metro 916?
I do. So Northeast Metro 916 is an intermediate school district, of which Mounds View is a member, along with several other school districts around our area. They provide us with some special education programming, as well as career tech ed programming. So we had our meeting the first Wednesday of August. We got some legislative updates. Of particular interest was the Intermediate Teacher Residency Apprenticeship Collaborative, which is basically a grow-your-own program for the four intermediate school districts, so that they can train current employees to become teachers within the intermediate districts. We had an update on QComp from 916, and then approved a couple policies. They also are ready for the school year, ready to welcome students. They are fully staffed with teachers, just need a couple pair of professionals, but otherwise, the buildings are ready to go, and they're ready to welcome kids back the day after Labor Day.
Wonderful. Thank you, Shawna. We have item seven dot two, School Board Member Updates. Does anyone have anything to share?
I just want to say thank you again to the community ed and all the work that happened this summer. I was able to attend the band concert, the summer band concert, and it's just incredible to see the number of students who, some of them just picked up an instrument four weeks prior. And it's just so great to see the level of engagement in our music programs.
Agreed. Yeah, Yolanda.
And I just wanted to share, too, that the Mounds View Schools Education Foundation does have tickets on sale for Rock the Schoolhouse. It's a great event. It's going to be Saturday, November 8th, so you can go online and buy your tickets now.
Any other school board member updates?
I would offer one thing only, in that this is our last meeting before school starts. Usually, our board will mention, and I apologize if I'm taking your thunder.
But that's something.
I didn't know that.
I was all excited. I was like, I have something to share.
Here we go.
No, you go. You go. You go.
As we get, we just talked about all the summer programming. Yes, we won't run buses, but they're far fewer. As we get ready to start after Labor Day, please, if you're out there, watch for our walkers. Watch for the kids out on the corners. Watch for our buses. Those are important and valuable kids and and people to us. And there's going to be a whole lot more of them out on the streets, walking to and from school and taking our buses. So be aware, be alert, and and watch for them as we begin school here after Labor Day.
Thank you, Superintendent.
You're welcome. Sorry.
No, it's okay. It's okay. So thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. If there's nothing else to come be for the board, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.